Welcome everyone to the January 27th session of the Phoenix Congress, where we are putting together a blueprint for a better America. This legislative package will end poverty with universal basic income, end mass incarceration with major criminal justice reform, and end the endless wars by bringing our troops home and reducing our military budget. Today's session is the fourth of 21 public hearings on the 2022 legislative package, and we will review sections 118 and 119. The legislative provisions include restricting the use of no-knock warrants and reforming the use of cash bail. These sessions will alternate between Mondays and Thursdays at 1:30 PM Eastern through March 28th. For those following along at home, you can find a link to the legislative package in the description below or at bit.ly/B-A-A-A, lowercase, Dropbox. If you would like to submit a question in the chat, please indicate which of today's sections it applies to. And if you'd like to offer questions or other testimony for future hearings, please use the link in the description below. Before we continue, I would like to recite the preamble from the United States Constitution, just to help set the tone about what we are actually trying to achieve and accomplish here. "We, the people of the United States, in order to perform a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do, retain, and establish this Constitution of the United States of America." With that, I'd like to welcome the delegate from North Carolina's 4th District to continue his testimony on the Blueprint for a Better America.
Thank you, Max Chair. For the record, my name is Brian. I'm an organizer with the American Union and a Phoenix Congress delegate in good standing, representing what's expected to be North Carolina's 4th District in the 2022 election. And I always like starting how we start these off with reciting the preamble. And it's a good reminder that our first duty under the Constitution is to establish justice. And we're failing to do that in America today, and we can do better by adopting the Blueprint for a Better America. Today, we're going to talk about section, we'll start with section 118, which is relative to restricting no-knock warrants. And the other four subsections in this. And let's go through them all, all four of them briefly. So, no-knock warrants, subsection A. This section shall be cited as the Breonna Taylor Justice Act. And for those who don't remember Breonna Taylor, it was a little less than two years ago, beginning of 2020, in Louisville, Kentucky, when Breonna Taylor and her boyfriend were at home. It was a little after midnight on March 13th, and they heard somebody pounding at the door. And somebody, somebody was trying to kick through their door, get through their door. And so they went out from the bedroom into the hallway. Her boyfriend, when they didn't know who it was, fired a shot through the, through the door to ward off the intruder. And it turned out to be the police who fired some 332 bullets back through into her apartment, striking Breonna Taylor six times. And her boyfriend, she lay there dying on the hallway floor, called 911, asking for help, asking for the police to come and help them from whoever was, to protect them from whoever was breaking down their door, only to find out that it was the police who had been serving a no-knock warrant, despite the fact that the, the subject of the warrant, an ex-boyfriend of Breonna's, was actually in their custody across town at that time. And this, this, this death of an innocent woman in her own home, in the middle of the night, it shocked the nation. And her US Senator Rand Paul introduced a piece of legislation prohibiting no-knock warrants. And unfortunately, what he introduced was more of a soundbite to say that nobody, nobody can use a no-knock warrant because there's a very thin line between knocking on the, the door and, but between breaking down the door and announcing, and announcing that you're a police officer, and then breaking down the door. And so, section 118 seeks to address this by restricting not just the use of, of no-knock warrants, but the actual smashing in of a door for the police to break in. Now, a lot of this comes from a 2003 Supreme Court decision, the United States versus Banks. And they ruled that 15 to 20 seconds after the police announced that they were there with a search warrant, it was okay to smash the door. Now, in this case, they were serving a search warrant on a suspected drug dealer who was in the shower when they came knocking at his door in the afternoon. And the Supreme Court said, quote, "On the record here, what matters is the opportunity to get rid of cocaine, which a prudent dealer will keep near, commode, or kitchen sink. The significant circumstances include the arrival of the police during the day, when anyone probably would have been up and around, and the sufficiency of 15 to 20 seconds to get to the bathroom or the kitchen and start flushing cocaine down the drain." That, they ruled, were exigent circumstances because the pusher may be near the point of getting his drugs beyond reach. And so, it, that threat of destruction, of potential destruction of evidence, gave the police a reasonable, reasonable, made it reasonable for the police to break down the door. They said, quote, "15 to 20 seconds does not seem an unrealistic guess about the time someone would need to get in a position to rid his quarters of cocaine." Of course, once the exigency had matured, of course, the officers were not bound to learn anything more or wait any longer before going in, even though their entry entailed some harm to the building. 15 to 20 seconds, you know, it's certainly possible that someone can come to the door in 15, 20 seconds. You know, with somebody who's campaigned for office and knocked on lots and lots of doors in my community, it's possible for someone to get there in 15, 20 seconds. But, you know, usually when I knock on doors, you got about 30 seconds before I'll knock a second time, and then another good 30 seconds or so before I'll, you know, leave a note and head on to the next house. Smashing down someone's door after 15, 20 seconds seems pretty extreme. Now, no-knock warrants are used tens of thousands of times every year in this country. Majority of them are used in drug cases. Majority of them are served on people of color. They're issued for a variety of reasons. Confidential informants, people who might be facing other, who are facing other charges, other criminal charges, might come forward and say, hey, I know somebody that you should go after. If you'll reduce my time or my, the charges against me, you know, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you evidence. Confidential informants have, have, have done this on many occasions. Do you, police end up going to the wrong address? They're looking for the wrong person, as they were in Breonna Taylor's case, somebody they already had in custody. This happens far, far too many times. Now, it's important to qualify that the Blueprint for a Better America in our mission to establish justice, it ends the federal drug war. And so, on the federal level, there will be no more drug cases. That'll be up to states to set their own policies. So, a lot of these will go away on the federal level, and they will be more targeted towards real exigent circumstances and not the hypothetical destruction of cocaine within 15 to 20 seconds. You know, it's also important to, to look at how, like, what is, what is someone's reaction when someone comes bursting through their door with no warning or with very little warning? You know, Breonna Taylor's case, they, the police clearly had not identified themselves to the, the occupants, which is why her boyfriend defended his home, his castle, by firing back. And as we've seen, the castle doctrine sort of expand around the country. This is, like, this is the, these are the origins of the Fourth Amendment protections in the Constitution. It's the idea that a person should be secure in their home from unreasonable searches and seizures. And the idea of no-knock warrants really goes in the face of that. So, subsection B of this part of the bill contains a prohibition on forcibly entering an occupied dwelling. If somebody's there, then you can't force your way in unless it is daytime. Daytime is defined under Rule 41A to B of the Federal Rules of Criminal Procedure as being between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. If you need to force your way and do it, again, breaking down people's doors in the middle of the night is just a recipe for, just a recipe for, for confusion, for people getting hurt. This would restrict it to daytime hours. During daytime hours, you, office, federal law enforcement officers would be prohibited from forcing their way into an occupied dwelling unless they had a no-knock warrant or the occupant refuses admittance to the officer pursuant to Section 3109 of Title 18 of the United States Code, after having provided notice of their authority and purpose. And so, this goes back to the idea of being able to yell "police" and then a few seconds later smash in someone's door. Technically, not a no-knock warrant if you announced yourself and knock before smashing in the door. But subsection C of this, this part of the legislation would create a rebuttable presumption that before you officers were entitled to, to claim that they had been refused admittance, that they needed to repeatedly knock and give people inside time to answer the door. This bill creates a rebuttable presumption that between the hours of 8:00 AM and 9:00 PM, three minutes, if you're knocking over a three-minute period of time, and they refuse to answer the door, that they are refusing admittance. Or during other times of day, a five-minute, five minutes of knocking on the door. This gives people time to get out of the shower. The defendant in the, the case, United States versus Banks, he was in the shower during, when the police showed up at his door. You know, especially, again, it's certainly possible to answer a door within 15, 20 seconds, but it's also just as possible that you're not ready to, to answer a door within 15, 20 seconds, that you need a couple of minutes to finish eating a brisket sandwich, to put some pants on, to, you know, wake up, get out of the shower, do a variety of things. And so, before the police come smashing through the door, this bill establishes that waiting three minutes during, during normal hours or five minutes outside of that is a, there's a rebuttable presumption that they have been refused entry. Rebuttable presumption is one of my, my favorite phrases in the law. This would be like, if I caught my teenager sneaking in to the, into the, into my house at, you know, 2:00 in the morning, there's a rebuttable presumption that they've been up to no good. Now, it could be wrong, but certainly they can rebut that and say, you know, hey, just had a craving for, you know, midnight, for late-night Taco Bell, and then that was it. And then there's nothing nefarious going on here. But rebuttable presumption says the burden of proof is on you to prove otherwise. And so, in these scenarios, if the police have knocked on the door for three minutes or longer, then it's a rebuttable presumption that they've been refused entry. And until they've been refused entry, they shouldn't be smashing people's doors in. Subtitle, subsection D of this provision is the part that applies to states, as we've seen in other sections of the George Floyd Justice Act. This is federal legislation, and so we incentivize states to adopt similar protections. And so, once again, beginning in the 2025 fiscal year, states would be restricted from receiving funds under the COPS grant program unless they had a law that prohibits the issue of no-knock warrant in drug cases. Or, or sorry, and also restricts the uses of no-knock warrants to daytime hours. You know, drug cases especially, you know, there's, there's many members of law enforcement who've also called for an end to this practice. Dozens of dozens of people, including police officers, get shot when they burst into people's homes. And it is an unnecessary, it's an unnecessary escalation. And it can be addressed through this legislation. Now, there is some good news on this front. Although this, the Justice Department last September announced that they would limit the use of no-knock entries in connection with the executive, in, in the, in connection with the execution of warrants in a couple ways. And so, this would apply to, you know, the FBI, everybody under the Department of Justice. And so, it limits them so that agents could only seek judicial authorization for a no-knock entry if they had reasonable grounds to believe that it, that knocking would create an imminent threat of physical violence to the agent and/or another person. So, the idea that maybe someone could possibly destroy evidence unless you bash their door and would no longer be, would no longer be justification for a no-knock entry, except in exceptional circumstances, such as a national security matter, or an agent believed that the evidence was so significant and the risk of its destruction so pronounced that a no-knock entry was warranted. They could first, they would first have to get permission from the Attorney General before asking for a no-knock warrant. And then the second, second part of this, this new policy for federal law enforcement officers would be that if the agent didn't anticipate a need for a no-knock warrant and get, get such a warrant, they could only, only for exigent circumstances. Could they then, you know, serve a, a warrant in a, in a no-knock, a no-knock manner? And so, by, these are good restrictions, good, a good update to the policy that focus on harm reduction as opposed to, you know, potential what-if of destruction of evidence in a way that, that just escalates the whole situation. So, these are good policies, but as we've talked about for other, other parts of this legislative package, policy can be changed, is changed. The next president of the United States could direct the Department of Justice to, you know, change this policy. And so, the proper solution is to fix it by writing it into the law and making it very clear that the Supreme Court can interpret the existing law to say 15 to 20 seconds is not an unrealistic amount of time. And instead, Congress can clarify that that is an unrealistic amount of time to wait before breaking someone's door down. And a few minutes is more appropriate. So, like many things, this is something that Congress can fix. They have just refused to act, and so, we can do it in 2022 with this legislative package. Max Chair, I guess that my concludes my testimony for section 118, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yes, we do have a question from Tony in California. Won't ending the use of no-knock warrants put police at risk?
Thank you for the question. I mean, there's a certain amount of risk in everything that we do. And so, is it possible that if the police come knocking on a door with a search warrant, that the person inside decides to, you know, make their last stand as opposed to, you know, opening the door? It's not impossible. But what are, but, we need to look at the, the overall picture. What is probable? How do these things usually shake out? I saw a video on Twitter the other day of the police serving a no-knock warrant because an IP address from that location had been used to make, make threats against the local police department. And so, you know, they smashed in the door, burst into the house, little girl watching TV, you know, pointing their guns at her, zip-tieing her hands behind her back. When in fact, you know, the house had an open Wi-Fi network, the police were pretty sure it wasn't them, but they just went ahead and burst in anyway. What is the harm that that causes? And this happens far too frequently in, in poor communities where the police come, come bursting in, pointing their guns at children. What are the, what is the harm that's caused by, by those actions? And that has to be balanced out with the larger, in our, was part of our larger goal, our larger duty to establish justice. You know, in that, that case, once the police have figured out that they had the, you know, it wasn't the right house, they went and they, they called the guy who they thought had done it, and he came down to the police station and turned himself in. There was really no need for the, a no-knock warrant for the, the violent escalation in this case. I guess one possible reason for these sorts of tactics is, as we talked about, the, the use of, of military surplus being donated to police departments. There is a requirement that the police use them, use the equipment in the year after getting them. And so, as a way to justify some of this, the military surplus that they get now, they need to put it to use. So, Tony asked a good question. Isn't it, isn't it possible that it could put the police at risk? And the answer is, in a country of, you know, 330 million people, there is a non-zero chance that that will happen. But in, in the grand scheme of things, in the way that tens of thousands of these are being used right now, there's far more harm being done with the current policy.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, section 118 is assigned to the Subcommittee on the George Floyd Justice Act. You may proceed to section 119.
Thank you, Max Chair. Section 119 is about reforming cash bail. You know, right now, at this very moment, we have hundreds of thousands of Americans who are incarcerated, not because they've been convicted of a crime, but because they're waiting for a day in court, because they've been arrested and they can't pay their bail. And so, this section is really driven by the, the philosophy that no one should be held in jail because they can't afford to pay bail. And Bryan Stevenson is the author of Just Mercy, and he said, "The opposite of poverty is not wealth, the opposite of poverty is justice." And so, as we, we lean into our constitutional duty to establish justice, we have to look at reforming cash bail. You know, there are far too many, like, the whole war on drugs and, and the no-knock warrants and everything. This is an issue that, that disproportionately affects poor communities, communities of color, and can have devastating consequences. Caleb Browder, who we'll, we'll talk more about when we get to the, the sections, reforming solitary confinement. You know, he was a teenage boy who spent years in Rikers Island in New York because his family couldn't pay his cash bail. And he ended up spending years in solitary confinement because he couldn't, his family couldn't afford to bail him out of jail. And it destroyed his mental health in such a way that he ultimately committed suicide within a few years over cash bail. Cash bail is destroying lives, and it is not justice. We can, we can do better by reforming it. So, this, section 119 has two subsections. First is, would end cash bail on the federal level. Says, "Simply notwithstanding any provision of federal law, no justice judge or any other judicial official in any court created by or under Article 3 of the Constitution of the United States may use payment of money as a condition of pre-trial release in any criminal case." Now, if someone is a danger to society, then judges will, as always, have the authority and the ability to hold someone. But demanding money in order to release someone, bail is not, bail is not punishment. Bail is there to ensure someone's return to court. And we have many other ways in the 21st century to ensure that people do that through supervised release, through just reminding people by text messages, by phone calls, by email about what's going on with their, their, with their court. There are far better ways to make sure that people come back besides demanding money. I guess one of the, we should talk about one of the, what are the reasons why we, we have this system in place? And it's important to recognize that the United States is one of only two countries on the planet that allows a for-profit cash bail industry. The Philippines is the other one. And it's a big, it's a big business. California, a few years ago, looked at a proposition that would have ended the practice of, of cash bail, and the bail bond industry mobilized to, to stir up fear and get people to vote against it. And, you know, fear, fear and getting tough on crime, I know this is an easy thing for politicians to lean into. I remember during my years in the legislature, we debated a bill one time that when someone was going to be released, when their sentence was, was complete, and, you know, they would be, they would be freed. This bill instead, we put them on supervised release for, I forget, three or six months ahead of time. Because otherwise, once someone's sentence is done, then that's it. You have no, it's done and it's over. And by putting someone on supervised release, you have the opportunity to, you know, help them re-acclimate to the community. And that's what you, if that, that's the goal of incarceration is to, you know, is to, is to reform humankind, not exterminate it. But some people got all upset by this idea of, you know, letting, letting criminals out 90 days or six months before, before the last possible day they could be released. They were more concerned about the punishment than the, than the end result. And, and so, we have that, we have that same objection to cash bail today. Well, if you, if you let, if you let people out of jail, some of them will, will do bad things. And again, in a country of 330 million people, that is a non-zero number. But we have to look at the harm that is being caused by the practice of cash bail today. Like, if you're just, if you're suddenly, your life is interrupted and you're put, you're locked up, what happens? You, it's very easy to lose your job, to lose your, lose your apartment. You could lose custody of your children. All these things that are destabilizing to people's lives. You know, to the extent that, that crime is a, is, you know, is someone acting outside of societal norms, you want to help that person have a stable life You want to help that person have a stable life in order to better act within those societal norms. Sandra Bland was pulled over in Texas a few years ago for allegedly failure to use a turn signal. And her traffic stop escalated, and she was thrown in jail and unable to pay her bail. She lost her, the new job that she was supposed to start on Monday and was found dead in her jail cell after a few days. Cash bail is not justice, and no one should be held just because they can't afford to pay. The the second part of this, this section puts restrictions on states. Once again, this would restrict funds under the Burn Grant Program, beginning in the twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Unless the state did two things. One, the state has to submit to the Attorney General the percentage of criminal cases where payment of money was a condition of pretrial release during the twelve months ending June thirtieth of that year. And two, achieve a percentage below a threshold for the year. So for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, seventy-five percent that only twenty-five percent of of criminal cases a maximum of seventy-five percent could could utilize cash bail. In twenty twenty-six, that would fall to fifty percent. In twenty twenty-seven, it would fall to twenty-five percent, and for the fiscal year twenty twenty-eight beyond, only ten percent. And so it would set lower targets each year for incentivized states to use cash bail less and less. And we look at why, why do we use cash bail? And one of the the biggest reasons is that it encourages self-service convictions. We lock people up and tell them they're too dangerous. They can't possibly be released unless unless they take a plea bargain, unless they plead guilty to something. And then very frequently, they can be let go with time served. They've, once they pleaded guilty to something, then they may no longer be a threat. It was a twenty seventeen study of Harris County in Texas, the third largest county in the United States. And it found that people who were held on on cash bail were twenty-five percent and unable to get out were twenty-five percent more likely to plead guilty. They were forty-three percent more likely to be sentenced to jail. Now, when you have that sort of disparity, it's very, it's very clear the justice is not being done. You can, I mean, you can imagine if you're trying to defend yourself, if you've been accused of something. How much of a defense can you put on while you're incarcerated? You can't talk to witnesses, you can't collect evidence. If you can't afford cash bail, you probably can't afford a good lawyer. And so you hope that there's a public defender out there who will zealously do all these things while you're locked up. In too many cases, this is, this is just the criminalizing of being poor. You see cases like Kyle Rittenhouse, a boy with charges, an adult, and set and given two million dollars bail. Now, he was able to crowdsource that money to get out of jail and and put on a defense. But when judges offer, you know, set bail on millions and millions of dollars for people, that's not they're they're handing down punishment prior to a conviction. That's just being capricious to assign someone a public defender and tell them, you can get out if you can put up five million dollars. That is not justice. You know, of course, this section of the bill doesn't occur in a vacuum. This legislative package will end poverty with universal basic income. And poverty, of course, is a driver of crime. Cash bail and self-service convictions are essential to trying to to deal with in the judicial system because it is just so so overloaded. And so by reducing crime through ending poverty, we can, we can better establish justice. So some states have already restricted the use of cash bail. New York did this recently in twenty nineteen, I believe, and their numbers found that eighty percent eighty percent of the people released under this, their, the new guidelines were not rearrested, twenty percent were rearrested for a criminal act of misdemeanor or something. And just two percent of those who have been released on these new guidelines were rearrested for violent crimes. Again, this is, it's not a non-zero number. But the harm that's being done doesn't come in a vacuum. And the idea that four out of, four out of five people who would not go on to to be rearrested should be held in jail just in case. You have to look at the harm that's being done, like we say, won't somebody think of the children? Like, we know, we want children to grow up to be, you know, mentally healthy, stable members of society. And having parents around is one of the best ways, one of the, one of the best contributing factors to that. And, you know, when you, when you lock up parents and you break up families and you see children get bounced around to a relative's house, maybe ending up in foster care, we're destabilizing their lives, and this causes far more harm in the short term and in the long term. And so ending cash bail, reforming cash bail is an essential part of establishing justice. Next chair, I I think that concludes my testimony for section one nineteen. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, yes. You had mentioned you had mentioned that that some folks have, or in California, there was stir, there's fear stirred up about the streets being unsafe. But I I think others may also feel that same way. Can you address or talk more about why they would have felt that that, well, I guess you did with the two percent, but I mean, do you think that this would make people feel that it would make the streets less safe?
That's a great question. And I guess I want to say people feel in large part what the media tells them to feel. Right? This is where you get the idea, if it bleeds, it leads. Local news, so much of news is is focused on on crime and making people feel unsafe. When they do, they have studies that that say that, you know, people, people will believe that crime, you know, nationwide is is up, yet they don't feel it, they don't feel unsafe in their own neighborhoods. It's a, it's a perception. And so the the numbers back this up that cash bail reform does not make the streets unsafe. What the media chooses to report, you can always, you can always cherry pick stories. But I would love to see more stories about the families that were reunited because of cash bail reform. I'd love to see more stories about the people who are able to prove their innocence rather than taking a plea bargain because of cash bail reform. You know, I would like to see more stories about the parents who are able to read to their children at night because of cash bail reform. There are there is, there, again, there's a non-zero chance that someone will be released and go on to commit another crime. But in the vast majority of cases, as as the studies show, that doesn't happen. And so cash bail needs to be reformed. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. You might have.
Yeah, so let me double check. Seeing no further questions, section one hundred nineteen is assigned to the Subcommittee on the George Floyd Justice Act. I'd like to thank the delegate for his testimony.
Thank you, next chair. It's always a pleasure to be here and it's just a reminder of of how much work there is to be done in reforming our our criminal justice system. And I look forward to continuing these these hearings over the next, next couple of months.
Fantastic, yeah. Yes, the next session of the Phoenix Congress will be held on Monday, January thirtieth on sections one hundred twenty, one hundred twenty-one, one hundred thirty-one, and one hundred thirty-two relative to civil asset forfeiture and a national police conduct registry. This this hearing is hereby